Hello? Sounds okay? Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 8th, 2021 East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, I'd like to call to order our hybrid meeting. I'm Scott Lambert, and I'm joined by Vice Chair Rich Orlo and Supervisor Sue Drummond, John Nagel, Township Manager and his staff, and Solicitor Joe McGory. If we can all stand and read the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just to reiterate, the hybrid meeting is being recorded. Residents will have an opportunity to comment after each agenda item, which we will discuss by the board, and then any non-agenda items that the residents wish to discuss will occur during the public comments section. Please identify yourself at that time, and Donna Weickert will assist you. Begin with the board briefings. Executive sessions were held on September 8th at 6:00 for real estate, personnel, and legal issues. I'd like to announce to everyone that we have a bulk trash pickup scheduled for Tuesday, October 5th through Friday, October 8th, and drop off materials here at the township building on Saturday from 7:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. At this point, I'm going to go off of the agenda just briefly here. As we all know, the past two weeks have been pretty stressful for the township with a number of issues related to IDA and then our recent issue with the Aqua Water Boyle Advisory that had occurred. And I would like to ask our emergency coordinator, Lauren Nafsoiser, to kind of give a summary of some of the involvement that he's had, and perhaps Steve Brown, if there's anything else to add to it. I know that on Saturday, I was in contact with Steve and Lauren pertaining to Aqua and the Boyle Advisory and the lack of information that was coming through. I was forwarding my emails that were coming to my personal email address to them. So there were a number of issues that these gentlemen tackled and have rectified to some degree to their ability with Aqua from Saturday to now. So Lauren, if you could maybe give a summary? Appreciate it.
All right. Is this on? Good? Okay. So I'll start briefly with IDA. We had brought in, with the fire department, we had brought in additional staffing and volunteers to be on station prior to the storm. We were able to staff multiple units and handled simultaneous calls in all corners of the district, basically starting the evening of the storm. And overnight, we handled over 20 incidents, removing multiple people from stranded vehicles and getting back, getting them back to where on their way safely with no injuries, and everyone performed remarkably well. After the storm, we've completed some initial damage assessments, completed that information and forwarded it on to the county for determination. The county has established a website with a lot of resources for the residents. If they can go to that, it's chesco.org/ida. It has all, all kinds of information that's available to assist the residents as they try and recover and also to submit their damages. We ask that any residents that have damage that haven't reported it yet to use the website for those damage assessments. It's unclear whether there'll be any financial assistance at this time, but we need to get the information submitted so that we can get in line. That's also the reason that we've declared an emergency, so that we're in line for any aid should that become available. The county also established a multi-agency coordination center in Thorndale to assist any residents to go in person for assistance. That is open tomorrow, and then that will be the close. So if they need, if they would like to attend that, they should check the, check the website for that information. As far as Aqua goes, communication has been difficult at best with Aqua. We've been getting mixed messages, even the county level has been getting mixed messages. I don't, I don't understand what happened or where, but hopefully it will be addressed in the future. The initial Boyle Water Advisory was listed for East Whiteland and Charlestown. Then they expanded it to a much larger area, but that was accidental. They didn't mean to expand it that far. They thought they were going to, but then they did not. So they returned it back down to East Whiteland and Charlestown. Then I was able to get more clarification that it was only portions of East Whiteland and Charlestown. So there is a map posted on Aqua's website, and I'm not sure if we'll be able to show it here at this time or not, but the shaded area would indicate whether you're in that Boyle Water Advisory or not. We were able to get a water truck into the township today. Initially, the water trucks were set up by Aqua to cover the entire outage area that they thought was going to be much larger. Then when it contracted, they had not moved the water trucks yet. So we did a lot of work on the backside to get one of the water trucks into our district since we are affected directly by this. And that truck arrived today, and it should be here tomorrow as well, from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Residents can bring their containers and get filled up whatever containers they have with drinking, drinking water that's safe. As far as the timeline moving forward, Aqua is unable to give any answer at all, and that comes from the president of the company that they can't give an answer. The last report they gave said that they've just made access into the facility that was damaged to begin assessing the facility to see what's wrong with it before they can repair it. So I, I don't know that it's going to be anytime soon that this is rectified, but the best advice I've gotten from Aqua, once I finally got a contact person, which I have called several times now, is to keep an eye on the website. He said Aqua's website sometimes even has information before he knows it. So that's the best that we can do to let our residents know to keep an eye on things. And we'll, we will obviously put everything out as soon as we have information to post on the website and social media as best we can. As far as the Boyle Water Advisory goes, if you go on Aqua's website, it can give you information on what that means. It'll refer you to the CDC where you can find more information on Boyle Water Advisory and also tips on water conservation since we're all struggling with this right now.
Is there any other part of the county that's under a Boyle Order that you know of?
No, sir.
Parts of East Whiteland and Charlestown?
It is just us. Yep. Okay.
Lauren, again, I want to thank you and Steve on Labor Day weekend, all the effort that you guys put in to trying to reach out to Aqua and trying to get information and push information out through the website. Donna, I know you were involved with that, too. Thank you. And also, I'd like to add that our DPW department, John Neild and his staff, countless number of people from there were involved with many different situations with IDA, including helping residents pump out their basements and, again, numerous situations where they were helpful.
Absolutely.
And thank you one and all for that. It was a strong effort, and we appreciate everything that you did.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we'll start off with number three with board motion and resolutions. I guess, Chris, there's not too much on this particular vehicle, right? Nothing major?
Now, I believe the only change was we moved to a Dodge Durango. We had previously approved the Ford Explorer, but we just got in a new one, and they, they've kind of changed a little bit. So we try not to change vehicles when we have all of the upfitting that we can move from one vehicle to another when we retire a vehicle because that's very expensive. So in this case, Ford has changed the vehicle enough that we would have had to have purchased new upfitting equipment. So it became time to try out another vehicle, which is going to be the Dodge Durango. So that was, we were changing the Ford, which had been approved, to a Dodge Durango, and the price is essentially the same.
Can I get a motion to accept purchase?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2021 Dodge Durango from New Holland Dodge Chrysler Jeep Ram through Co-Stars.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Could I make one more comment in regards to the vehicles? This is just for your information. As you know, with, I guess Rich probably knows better than all of us, the, the vehicle situation in the United States right now is kind of crazy. So all of these things are, we have to kind of get whatever we can get, how we get it. So there's a lot of moving targets. So when we're looking at some of these things, sometimes we just have to grab what's on a lot. So for future reference, I guess, it's, it's kind of like if, if we need to grab one, that's, that's kind of where we're leaning towards, or otherwise, you may wait four to six months to get something that you're, that you want.
Yeah, I agree. That's fine. You, you will wait a long time to get exactly what you want now, and it's going to be, and it's going to, depending on what article you believe it could last through the end of next year. We'll see.
Yeah, and apparently, some of these dealerships that purchase vehicles to sell to police departments in the United States are, they've already ordered so many that they, they still had some. So that's why we were able to actually grab this one. This was the wrong color, but it's going to, we're going to have to deal with it. Thank you.
Steve Brown, I'll let you discuss the 3B and 3C and D.
All right. Thank you, Scott. The Park and Recreation Board via a subcommittee has prepared a proposal to establish a Friends of East Whiteland Township Parks, which would hopefully ultimately become a 501(c)(3) organization. And this organization would support the Park and Rec Board and the Board of Supervisors in our, our Park and Rec programming efforts and events. The subcommittee has prepared a statement of need and a mission and objective, which the board has, and I'll just read the mission. And it, it says, "The mission is to advance the development and funding of active lifestyle and wellness programs for East Whiteland Township. The foundation supports the efforts of the Park and Rec Board to ensure that all residents of East Whiteland have access to high-quality and diverse recreational and cultural activities and programs." Again, this is just a proposal. There are a number of details that would be worked out in the process. One of the primary purposes is to fundraise and to accept donations, and again, in support of Park and Rec activities. I've spoken to an attorney in the solicitor's office who has experience putting together 501(c)(3) organizations. The rough cost estimate was $3,000 to $4,000 to handle the paperwork with the state and with the IRS. And during that process, again, there would be a number of details and questions that would have to be answered and details filled out. Park and Rec Board would work on them, and they would be brought to the board, you know, as we worked our way through it. For example, the, you know, the, the number of the board of directors, how many would be appointed by the township, what's the budget of the group going to be, those types of things we would work out. So again, tonight, this is just a proposal, and if the board is willing, then the Park and Rec Board and I and the solicitor will move ahead with it and involve you along the way.
Previously, there was another 501(c)(3) out there, correct? So this is nothing really new?
Correct.
Really? For Park and Rec?
Well, no. There, well, it was the Friends of the Summer Stage.
Oh, okay.
So it was similar, but this group would have a slightly broader purpose.
There was also a Friends of the Fire Company when they built their building, and that's no longer existence because it doesn't need anymore, but yeah, we get the idea.
Right. Right.
Well, this is very much like West Whiteland has, right?
Exactly. Very, very much like our neighbor to the west.
Right. Right. So it's mostly because the Parks and Rec Board can't accept donations.
Right.
These guys can go out and get, raise funds.
Right. Exactly. Right.
So I think the trick will be territoriality between Parks and Rec and this new group.
Yeah, I think so. Again, I, I think as we work our way through it, the purposes of the group would be defined, and again, it would be clearly to be in support of Park and Rec programs that both the Board of Supervisors and the Park and Rec Board are, you know, are working on. So they couldn't go off, go off on their own and do their own thing.
Right. It's not intended to be a fully independent run.
Exactly.
That's fine. Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you.
I guess if we can have a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal to establish Friends of East Whiteland Township Parks 501(c)(3).
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you. The next two items, 3C, well, actually, next three items, next 3C, 3D, 3E, all relate to movie night, which was discussed last month. Movie night is planned for Friday, October 1st, from 6:30 to 8:30 in Valley Creek Park. The movie has been selected. It's the family favorite Shrek. So in order to put the event on, it'll be very similar to one of the concerts. We need the parking at One Country View, and so we need to modify the agreement with workspace, which they're willing to do. All we need to modify is to include this event. The original agreement was just for the, the three concerts. So that's 3C. And then 3D is because Locust Lane will be there for movie evening. We need to waive the alcohol policy, excuse me, for movie night. And then 3E, it's the same agreement. Again, we need to extend it with Locust Lane, the indemnification agreement with Locust Lane for the same evening. So these are all related.
There are no questions.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Rich, you want to lead a motion?
Yeah. Make a motion to approve items 3, C through F, or no, C through E regarding, you know, movie night, park, liquor, et cetera, et cetera.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you. The last item that I have is for the board to consider the adoption of a policy to accept bench and tree donations for our parks. We currently don't have such a policy. It's done on an ad hoc basis, which, which actually kind of works. But we do have a family that wants to donate a tree and a bench in the new Bacton Hill Park, and the Park and Rec Board recommended, instead of doing things kind of on a one-off basis, that we actually create a policy for, for that purpose. And so you have a draft of a policy before you that I prepared. I reviewed a number of similar policies from townships in our area and across the state, and it describes the purposes and the types of dedications and the, and again, the different policies, the review of the application. It's in our sole discretion, you know, has to be somewhere where we have a need. We described a form of payment. We basically don't make any guarantees that these trees or benches would be there forever. We'll also have standards for the memorial plaque and so forth. The Park and Rec Board reviewed this at their meeting in August and recommended it for approval, and so it's before you this evening.
It was, it was good to see a lot of input from the Park and Rec Board with some of the changes. I think it's pretty clear. I think it's well-written. Any questions, Rich? Sue?
Aye.
Donna? All right. Sue, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the policy for bench and tree donations for the parks.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you.
So next, we've got a motion to advertise for... Oh, I'm missing. Yep. All right. And Zach, if you can give us some background on this one?
Sure. So the township recently partnered with Charlestown Township to pursue a multimodal transportation fund grant. This is a grant available through Department of Community and Economic Development for intersection improvements to the intersection of Phoenixville Pike, Sidley Road, and Yellow Springs Road, sort of the northeast corner of the township. What we've done is to, even though Charlestown is the owner of the signal at the intersection, we own the land that, where the improvements will take place. So we've, we've partnered with Charlestown in the sense that we've committed matching funds. They are the applicant, but we've committed matching funds. This was approved at the board's August meeting. When the, the application was submitted, the state came back with a number of things that Charlestown needed to address, just, you know, administrative items related to their application, one of which was a letter from the township, us, East Whiteland Township, that is, as the property owner of the intersection improvements, basically authorizing the grant to proceed with the improvements as outlined. So what's, initially, when we received the email, we weren't quite sure what they were requesting, but I believe this is a pretty, pretty standard portion of the application. It's one of, I would say, a dozen or so exhibits that normally need to get submitted, and I think it honestly just sort of fell through cracks between Charlestown leading the effort and sort of requesting documents from us as needed. So I believe this is fairly straightforward, but we wanted to make sure that the board was aware of sort of the process and where it is. It's currently under review. It hasn't been approved. This isn't a sort of a notice to proceed or anything formal in terms of the project being awarded. It's more about us acknowledging, we own the land and we're comfortable with the project.
So we're just, this is just so they can get their application in?
Yeah. It's just one of a couple of last minute...
They, they're not accepting the application without our okay.
Exactly.
All right. That's easy.
We weren't sure what it was at first. That's why it's on the agenda primarily.
That's easy. No, she didn't word it very well. Right. Okay.
Yes, it, Zach's perfectly correct. It came in as a notice to proceed, and in our world, that means much differently than a notice to proceed with the application, so.
Sort of the antenna went up. We wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of what was going on.
So do we need a vote on, on to proceed with the application, or is this just FYI for us?
I don't know. You need to take form on why. I don't know whether...
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Moving on to motion to advertise. Donna, any, any comments out there?
No, there are not.
Okay. John, I guess, again, this seems straightforward. Motion to advertise for the Ford Escape.
Yeah, this is the vehicle that Steve Brown previously drove. It's more of a rust bucket than it is. It's got a lot of mileage on it, so it's ready to be turned into the private sector, and hopefully we'll get a good price for it.
Is that the one where there's no floorboards?
Not that bad.
Okay. That must be John's car. Rich, could you make a motion to advertise?
Sure. Make a motion to advertise the sale of 2008 Ford Escape on Munisabet.
Have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. Say goodbye, Steve.
Good run.
Good runs. Good riddance. Uh, John Neal, I, if you can give us maybe, uh... I'm looking around the room going, okay, John. Uh, hey, John, um, just a little overview on the, where we stand with this heating and oil this year?
Uh, yeah, this is our annual, we do it every year, um, advertising for heating oil and diesel fuel. I would have been better prepared with last year's numbers if it wasn't for the storm. I've been a little swamped with things. Uh, we are expecting to be paying a lot more than we were last year. Um, we have a couple thousand gallons of diesel fuel for our fleet and the heating oil is for two, or three different properties for, uh, to heat at, uh, Valley Creek Park House, Township Building, and Six Mill Lane.
Without putting you on the spot, do you think the cost doubled?
No, no, it's not going to be that much, but, uh, it, it has a, a good chance of being 20% higher than it was.
Okay. All right. So Sue, if you'd like to make a motion to advertise?
I'll make a motion to advertise for the 2022 heating oil and diesel fuel bid.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes to advertise. Next, I will turn over the meeting, public meeting, over to, uh, to Zach and Joe McGrory.
At this time, I'd like to open the hearing for the conditional use application of 9 South Mailan Road and introduce into the record the following exhibits. Township Exhibit 1 is a letter to the D O E Local News. Township Exhibit 2 is the proof of publication. Township Exhibit 3 is a letter to Township Planning Commission. Township Exhibit 4 is the affidavit of posting. Township Exhibit 5 is the conditional use application with all its attachments. Township Exhibit 6 are letters to the property owners. And Township Exhibit 7 is the legal notice itself. I believe the applicant is on, on Zoom and represented by counsel? The applicant's attorney?
Your line.
Yes.
Okay. Your name?
My name is... Good evening, uh, the chairman, members of the board. I'm Jim Edelson, Senior Counsel at the Law Firm of lawyer Cooper, Cohen, and Bronfeld.
I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you one second? We can't, we can't hear you. If you could talk up...
Can you hear, is that any better? Is that any better?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Again, I, I'm Jim Edelson, Senior Counsel at the Law Firm of lawyer Cooper, Cohen, and Bronfeld. I'm here representing Nocet Real Estate LLC, the equitable owner of the property located at 9 South Mailan Road, Malvern, in East Whiteland Township. The 6.3 acre property is located at the end of South Mailan Road in the I Industrial Zoning District. The property is, for the most part, undeveloped. And the applicant is proposing a plan to construct a 6,000 square foot building, parking lots for employees and trailers, as well as an accessory storage shed and stone storage lot. The proposed use is of the same general character of other uses currently permitted in the I Industrial District as contained in Chapter 200 of the East Whiteland Zoning Code. We're actually here this evening seeking conditional use approval to grade within a portion of an onsite steep slope area to allow for the construction of a proposed new parking lot and driveway in accordance with the requirements for steep slope protection of Section 200-57F4 of the East Whiteland Zoning Ordinance. In support of this application, you'll hear testimony from the project's expert consultant confirming that this parking lot, as an integral part of the overall proposed site development plan, meets and complies with the goals, objectives, and standards of subsections G and H of Section 200-57 of the zoning code, and that there are no existing practical alternative alignments or locations. As previously stated, the site is located in a recently rezoned I Industrial District at the end of South Mailan Road, across from existing commercial and industrial sites, and is accessed via Business Route 30. The applicant has recently appeared before the Township Planning Commission and also revised their plans to address comments and recommendations received from the township staff following their review. And one of the conditions of their approval process is the subject of this hearing. As you'll see from the plans and testimony to follow on behalf of the applicant, the project is in line with the purpose, intent, and applicability of the East Whiteland Township Zoning Code, and in particular, meets the development standards of Section 200-43, the I Industrial District. And additionally, that the allowance of its request for conditional use approval will not be contrary nor adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. I'm joined this evening by John Roberts Robinson, President of J N R Engineering and a civil engineer of record, and I believe the equitable owner, Brad Brooks, sole member of Nocet Real Estate LLC. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to call our first witness.
And before you call your first witness, I'd like to open the floor to see if anyone wants to enter their appearance as a party in opposition to this application. Anyone making themselves known?
No.
I also want to open the floor to anyone who wants to enter their appearance as a party to support the application. Anyone?
No.
Would the board entertain just an offer of proof instead of formal testimony?
Ah, yes, I would, yeah. I do have one question at the end, but yes.
Okay, Counselor, why don't you, why don't you do an offer of proof summarizing the testimony and then just swear on all the witnesses at the same time and say that they agree with what your offer of proof was? Uh, that'll expedite the hearing since no one's in opposition or in support.
Okay, hold on. If you'll give pardon one second, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Edelson, this is the court reporter. Could you try to turn your volume up a little bit because you're very low?
I, I'll try and speak louder. I've got it up as large, as, as high as I can get it. Um, Mr. Chairman, uh, one of the things I wanted to make sure of is that we have four exhibits, or three, four exhibits, actually. Uh, they're marked A1, A2, A3, and A4, and they were previously submitted today. And I believe they were submitted to Zach Warner, uh, and I'd like to just confirm it with Mr. Robinson.
Yeah, and I, I have a copy of those exhibits and we'll admit them in the evidence.
Okay, fine. Our expert witness would say, in his opinion, that it's fair that the proposed use of the subject property is permitted in the district, that it falls within the provision of the code for steep slopes 257F4, which accords the applicant the right to seek this conditional use. That in his professional opinion, there are no practical or practicable alternative locations for the proposed use. He would also say, testify, that the plan meets the, the goals and standards of the steep slope protection, uh, section of the code as contained in 200-57A, and that there would be no adverse effect to the existing steep slopes, and they will be replaced with a proposed retaining wall. Additionally, he would, uh, end his testimony by saying that, in his opinion, the grant of a conditional use will not be contrary to the public interest as expressed in 200-115E and F. And finally, he would say that it in no way runs counter to the spirit of purpose of this chapter. And that would be the substance of his testimony.
Um, can you identify this witness? We'll swear him in and have him confirm your statements.
The witness is Jack Robinson. Mr. Robinson?
Jack, we, we have found you qualified to testify as an expert in the past. Um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not with the true self you got?
I do.
Do you confirm that the, um, testimony as presented by your attorney is true and accurate as if it was your testimony in full?
Confirmed.
Okay, do you have any other testimony, Counselor?
No, we have nothing more, Mr. Chairman.
Does the board have any questions?
I did have a question, but I found my answer. The, uh, question was how come the material bins are not listed on the conditional use application itself, uh, in addition to the driveway and the parking spaces? But they are listed in the report. So I think that would cover it.
I, I have a question. How much of the, um, you're disturbing a certain portion of steep slopes, 17,000 some square feet. What percentage of the total property is that? How much of the property is undisturbed versus what's being cut into?
I would defer Mr. Robinson.
That is, let me calculate that. Um, it's a six, it's a six and a quarter acre property in total. And the percentage of steep slope disturbance is 6%, 6.2% now.
Thank you. And the rest of it is pretty much undisturbed, right? Being left as is?
Well, yeah, the total, the total disturbance is less than two acres. So unless, the total disturbance on the site is less, is less than a third of the site. But the steep slope disturbance is 6% of the site.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Any, I, I've, Joe, I've just got one, um... What's, what's, what's designed here? Is it, uh, is it in line with the soil conservation practices, um, with reasonable conditions? Especially in light of what's been happening with the water flows that we've been having? And the fact that this sits right above Lancaster Avenue?
Yes, this, this site's designed, uh, well, at, at this point, it's, we're in the very early stages, but we've gone as far as grading the whole site and already have a preliminary stormwater design for this site. Um, and you can see the, there's a basin to the, looks like the triangular piece to the middle of the page. So we have a rather large basin considering the amount of impervious. And the way, way it works is we have a, a swell that, that catches all of the runoff off the site itself, uh, and filters the water and channels it into that basin that's there. Um, this, 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 this site, because we do have more room to work with and it was not a, not a whole lot of impervious, especially for an industrial site, we have a higher loading ratio, which is something the Conservation District likes. Um, so in other words, it, we have a lot of, uh, stormwater absorption area for the amount of, for the amount of impervious, you know, a good ratio.
Jack, as you're building this, um, can you guarantee that you will not load a lot of mud and silt into Valley Creek? Will these pla, things be in place even while you're under construction?
Yes, that, that, we'll have a, because of the way that this is, this is laid out, we won't just be used relying on silt sock. We, we're actually going to have a sediment trap, which will also be that triangular, uh, system there. And because this is exceptional value, our isolation distance from that stream is, is over 150 feet. So there's a long, there's a, there's a long stretch in between, any disturbance at all in that stream.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the audience?
No, there's not.
Right, at this time, we'll conclude the hearing. Reconvene into the public meeting portion of the agenda. As this board's aware, you have up to 45 days to, to, um, vote on this decision. Or you can vote tonight and within the next 45 days, we draft a decision. What's the board's wishes?
I don't have a problem voting tonight.
I'm okay with that, too.
I'm okay.
Okay.
All right, I'll make a...
Sue, make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use request, CU 08 2021, in accordance with the testimony and, uh, conditions, uh, presented.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, Joe, I'll assume we're out of the public hearing. And we'll move into Section 6 with planning and development. Tonight, um, we will be having a presentation by the Great Valley School District in the 10 to 15 minute range to give us an overview of the proposed grade five and six center at Katie Markley. Zach, do you have any other insight onto that?
No, I think I'll just let David Schrader present. He's the architect for the school district. I think he'll need, uh, screen sharing abilities for a little presentation that he has. Um, so with that, I'll just turn it over to David, if that's all right.
Okay.
And I might give it to Dr. Gafredo for just a moment to introduce.
Yes, thank you, David, and thank you all for giving us this time to share our planning and our process on our, our new five-six center planning. Um, just to give some brief context, the district is in a period of growth. This school year alone, we already have 100 more students this year than we did last year. And we have five and 10-year projections that so, show that growth to be fairly steady uh, over, over a period of time. So as a result, we're experiencing at our elementary schools, um, this, this growth and reaching of capacity with our existing four elementaries. Likewise, our middle school, which serves students in grades 6, 7, 8, is already beyond its capacity. So looking at the growth, the impact, uh, the way to alleviate all these concerns across these five schools was the development of a five-six center, uh, which after a lot of analysis, uh, we decided was best suited on our existing Katie Markley district office plot. So I wanted to provide that context, but I know the lion's share of this evening's time is for Mr. Schrader and his team, uh, to highlight the planning. So again, thank you for this evening. And Mr. Schrader, it's back to you.
Oh, good, thank you. Hopefully, everybody can see the screen. Zach, I assume they can see this?
Yes, looks good.
Great. Uh, also with the district and on the line here is Chuck Peterson, Director of Business Affairs. And I have with me Chris Jensen from T and M Associates, who can answer questions about civil engineering, should you have any? And Guy DiMartino from Traffic Planning and Design, who can answer the beginning, at least, of traffic discussions. Um, the property in question certainly is the Swedesford Road, uh, property and Church Road Corner. Um, you're familiar with the Katie Markley portion of the site, highlighted here, and then the existing district administration building, previously known as the East Whiteland Consolidated School. Uh, the property across the street, labeled OS here, all the way down to the Chester Valley Trail. And here are the public works portions of the buildings that you're currently sitting in. So this just gives you a sense of the district-owned property. And I'm not going to spend time on this slide other than to say that the buildings and the parking and support structures are located here. The stormwater management for these properties, or at least the majority of it, are located here. And they're piped underneath the Swedesford roadway, uh, over to that parcel. So just a, a beginning snapshot here. Uh, we've spent quite a bit of time with various commissions from your township and appreciate the time that you've put into this. Uh, the historical commission, we've met with, met with them on March 17th. On May 19th, again... nineteenth again, and on August eighteenth, had a great discussion with them, and I believe we've met with approval on the overall design concept we have, and I'll share that with you momentarily. Planning Commission, we gave a preliminary presentation to on March twenty-fourth, and again, presented August twenty-fifth, something very similar to what I'm going to share now, only this is a condensed version, to give you a sense of what we're talking about. The goals that we set out with the Historical Commission were truly to preserve the nineteen thirty-nine portion of the East Whiteland Consolidated School, and I'm going to show you exactly which portion that is, to highlight that facade to the community passing on Church Road, and to do our best to sensitively frame that nineteen thirty-nine structure with a two-story structure for the building that we're going to construct. We're building a building for nine hundred students to start with. The core structures, meaning the dining spaces, the gymnasium, the library, and all of those are built to accommodate twelve hundred students in the future. So that's why we had to go to a two-story structure on the site. You'll see in a moment that we will adaptively reuse the interior of the nineteen thirty-nine building, and the goal really is to highlight the experience of that nineteen thirty-nine building as part of the daily circulation for students, and to immerse them in the history of this township and the other townships that Great Valley encompasses. So just to start this, the portion that you see here, on the left-hand side, is Chester Valley Country Club. This is the original East Whiteland Consolidated School, and that is as of nineteen forty-six. So the portion that we are going to preserve and restore and adaptively reuse is the portion from this, uh, basically gabled portion to this gabled portion. The two perimeter sides, the left-hand side and the right-hand side, were built in the early nineteen fifties and late nineteen fifties, and it's interesting, because the architecture of both is different, yet they were built in the same decade. So this is the portion that we will construct, and I just want to highlight, this area of each of the two gabled wings will become major access points. They'll be, will be cutting the stone out of the base on each side and creating entry points to the building from the bus drop-off side of the building. This area will be restored with two divided light windows, and we'll do a little bit of restoration work on this front porch and leave this as kind of a symbolic piece of the architecture, but people will not be entering the building through that portion of the building. The second thing that I want to highlight here is the back portion of the nineteen thirty-nine structure, again, that we'll be maintaining from this side to this side. And this portion, which is currently the school board room, as some of you would know it, will be preserved and will be highlighted on the inside of the building, and will be cutting out from this point to this point to allow for both, almost a stage access for the library area and for a maker space for twenty-first century building. The site plan is something that we had presented earlier and that we're presenting one more time. This area is all existing parking area and circulation route through the current Katy Markley site, and there's a parking lot up here that you're familiar with. This little rectangular box is the nineteen thirty-nine structure of the current East Whiteland District Administrative Building that we will maintain. There's a little bit of demolition that'll happen here, and that wing over here will be demolished as well. And what we're trying to do is what we try to do with all school building projects, and that is to separate the parent drop-off and the bus drop-off. Obviously, we'll have to add new and additional parking to accommodate the additional structure on site, and what'll happen is you'll end up with a situation where you have a variety of pathways through the site for parent drop-off, so that we can try to accommodate all of the traffic for parent drop-off on the property without leaking out onto Swedesford Road. We're reversing the bus parking entry point to this side for Katy Markley. It currently comes in from this side of the property, and that way, we can keep the bus circulation for Katy Markley circulating from a separate driveway from the parent drop-off. And finally, we'll be creating, through the current front driveway situation and system on the site, a bus parking lot for the fifth and sixth grade center, and that's the reason why we're going to be widening and deepening these two entry points on either side of the structure. That'll allow us to bring all the kids in from the school, or from the buses on this side into the academic portion of the building. The gymnasium dining space, the secure entry for the building, and the administrative structure are all at the parent drop-off side. And so if you or I came to the building as a visitor, we'd park in the visitor parking lot, come through the secure entry into the building, and then finally, either go to a conference space, one of the community-sized spaces, or over into the academic wing. So that's the essential concept behind the design here. This is what is in front of land development currently as a plan with the Planning Commission, and then this is also what has been submitted to the County Conservation District for the NPDES permitting. From a plan standpoint, this was worked around a series of educational concepts that came out of buildings that the district has toured over time. To keep it simple, each of these are classroom clusters. The intent there is to create small learning communities where students are in groups of a hundred to a hundred twenty-five each, and therefore, they have kind of their own school within this larger school. So there are five sets of learning clusters on each floor for a total of ten. You'll see in a second here, this is the new media center or learning commons for the building, and these are the STEAM spaces, which means the science, technology, engineering spaces. Up here are all the community spaces, including dining, gymnasium, music spaces, and the administrative structure, and just the second floor of that, which is open through to the ground floor. So a video is worth a thousand pictures, and so what we'll share with you is a view coming in from Church Road as if you were a bus coming up the driveway. Then we'll circulate around the building so that you can see what we've worked through architecturally to try to complement the existing building, but still have a contemporary building, kind of framing that existing historic building. And finally, you'll see, as we come over to this side of the site and pull back, you'll see a lower-profile building, because it sits up on the hillside, allowing the peaked roof structures that we have for this building and the peaked roof structures of Katy Markley to kind of frame that building portion. So this is a video that hopefully you can all see, and the intent here is to start to implement some of the stone from the existing building on the two corners, to allow the glass to kind of be the separator and connector between our two-story structure and the one-story restoration and adaptive reuse we'll be doing. And then you'll see a series of products that are set in around the building that are essentially, as we get by the buses, a cementitious siding product, and these are all of the classrooms that'll look out on the Chester Valley Country Club. As you come around the driveway, you'll start to see, we were trying to reduce the total number of these gabled roof structures, and so we have these kind of small barn structures and contemporary structures that frame those common spaces that we shared with you. This is one of the courtyards separating these classroom clusters, and now what you'll be doing is coming around to the front entry after looking back at how these two-story structures frame everything to the front entry point, which is kind of a little bit more simplified, hopefully lower-profile front entry point, so it doesn't sit up too high on the hillside. And it's framed, we think, rather nicely by the Katy Markley building and this proposed structure that we'll have. So now you're kind of backing up, hopefully nobody drives like this, towards Swedesford Road. Now what we'll do is enter into the building through the secure entry or the parent drop-off. You'll, as in all schools today, you will go right by the administrative structure, and as soon as you go through the first doors, the second set of doors would be locked, and you'd be led to the left into the administrative structure. First thing that we're going to try to do is wherever we can graphically, we'd like to put some level of historic significance of the townships that this school district sits in, to try to keep the students immersed in the history of the area around them, particularly in light of the fact that the building that this is anchored by is a nineteen thirty-nine school building that was originally one of the schools that comprised the different districts, different districts that fell into Great Valley. Now what you're seeing is kind of a train shed that is accommodating the learning commons. So this is the large learning resource center with the STEAM spaces, and you saw how part of that was framed within the existing boardroom of the district administrative building. And this is just giving you a sense of what each of these clusters is like. So every hundred to a hundred twenty-five students occupies one of these spaces. These are classrooms with a project space in the middle, views and lots of daylight everywhere these kids will be looking. And this is going to kind of highlight what it's like to walk in the bus entry point for the building. So again, there's that window drop-down and cut-in. On the right-hand side, you'll look through the building and see some of the STEAM spaces, more histories you come by, and large areas for the students to flow through and into the building and into the learning resource centers, the center of the building. And this is kind of a takeoff of, again, a couple of the buildings that the district saw that they thought would well accommodate the needs of the next generation of Great Valley School District students, particularly the fifth and sixth grade students of our district. The goals at this point are to work through the design process through the spring of 2022. We're hoping that the land development approval process complements that design process. If all goes well, we will be bidding in the spring of 2022 with about a two-year construction process, and in, hopefully, the best of all cases, occupancy in August of 2024, which should coincide fairly well with the district's need to kind of expand out of the middle school and allow for some more breathing room in the elementary schools by bringing the fifth grade up from the elementaries and the sixth grade down from the middle, which again, should open up classrooms in each of those classroom structures by allowing this building to accommodate that. So that's hopefully the ten to fifteen-minute presentation, and I certainly yield the floor to the board. Thank you again for allowing us to present that.
That was a good job. Thank you.
David, do you have any, if it opens on time, this is Sue, are you going to be able to accommodate the growth in the students without going to trailers or any other temporary housing before this is open?
So Dan, I think within the two-year timeframe, that kind of goes to you to talk about buildings across the board.
It'll certainly be tight in some of the schools, but we're not anticipating any sort of changes with regards to trailers or additional space, but it is getting tight, particularly at our middle school. But no, Sue, to answer your question, we're not looking at a need for trailers if we're able to open in the fall of '24.
Thank you. It's nice to see this evolve. It looks very exciting. Thank you.
Rich, any questions?
Yeah, it just, it looks very nice, beautiful building. I'm sorry my kids are out of the district already. For some reasons. The only question I had, additional parking lot, we got a couple of letters from a few neighbors. Will you make sure to put buffering between the extra parking and a few of the neighbors' houses? I think that was important to them.
Yeah, I know so far, Chris Jensen from T&amp;M Associates has been developing appropriate buffering on those sides, and I know that we would certainly be amenable to further discussion about that. Chris, do you have any other thoughts?
Uh, no, David, that's correct. Absolutely, we can work to make sure there's the proper amount of buffering that would be desired there.
Dan, do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, thank you for your time. Good presentation. Looking forward to it.
Thank you. We'll be visiting you shortly.
Next on the agenda is under Planning and Development under Six B, considering a decision on a few areas that we've talked about previously. Zach?
Yeah, so at last month's meeting for both of these projects, the Twenty Moores Road Office Building and the eighty-three General Warren Boulevard, or Lot 15, in the Great Valley Commons Corporate Center, the board authorized staff in the solicitors' office to work on an approval resolution. We've since done that, included some, you know, general sort of boilerplate conditions and also some project-specific conditions. For the Twenty Moores Road site, we've included conditions surrounding the off-site traffic improvements that have been part of previous projects at this site and which the applicant has agreed to continue forward with this project. As I discussed earlier, we've, in the meantime, applied for a grant to sort of fund those projects without the developer's help, so to speak. So until such a time where the project moves forward, we'll continue to pursue grant opportunities to fund these improvements. I know they're very much needed. They're a high priority for the school district, so we've got a couple of different conditions that apply to that for the Twenty Moores Road project, and some related to tree removal, just trying to limit any potential clearing of the existing mature evergreens along Moores Road. I know that's a big factor for the neighboring property owners, so we've tried to preserve as much of that as possible through the review process.
Right, we had discussed about the waiver for the, to remove greater than twenty percent of trees, but you don't think that's actually accurate?
Yeah, they've, so they've got a very large area that's wooded. They haven't done a specific tree-by-tree inventory of the entire site, but logically speaking, there's no way they're clearing more than twenty percent of all those wooded areas at both the eastern end, the southern end along 202, and the western end. So what they've done out of sort of an abundance of caution is to request that waiver, they are replacing the trees one for one. They're placing more trees on site than are actually required by the code and trying to buffer some of the areas closer to the entrance along the driveways. So I think, again, it's sort of a belt and suspender, abundance of caution kind of thing, but I don't see it as an issue.
Sue, any questions? Rich?
I don't know if the applicant can answer this, but I know part of the reason why this was requested promptly was in order to facilitate a potential tenant. Has there been progress in that direction? I know you couldn't, can't name a tenant, but can we expect something shortly on this, a resolution, one way or the other?
Craig, do you want to answer that question?
Sure, be happy to. What I can say is that conversations with potential tenants have been robust. We've had all-hands call with them. There is a number of different architects and engineers that are at work. We're all targeting either in November or January, board approval by the tenant before a lease is signed. So, you know, we're very optimistic.
Okay.
I can answer more questions in more detail if you'd like.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Looks good to me.
I think based on previous discussions and everything, it looks fine, so I will, at this point, entertain a motion. Rich, I think?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve LD-192020 for Twenty Moores Road Office Building, the resolution as presented.
Have a second, Sue?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Definitely appreciate it.
You're welcome. Zach, number two?
Yeah, so the second one, again, is just for a small parking lot expansion to serve the PJ Willehand's development, sort of on the border with Charlestown Township. Again, not a whole lot of meat on this resolution. There is one condition. The applicant has offered a sort of a voluntary contribution to help fund some pedestrian improvements in the future. They realize they're providing connectivity to this site from Atwater and some of the surrounding properties is important, so they're interested in helping us fund some of those studies and engineering of that in the future.
Okay. Straightforward. Sue, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve LD-012021 for the Commons in Great Valley parking lot expansion.
Rich, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes.
Thank you again.
Thank you again.
Two for two, Lou.
So far, so good.
It's two for three, actually.
Two for three?
Yeah.
Zach, I guess I will put this in your good hands to lead us in the discussion on the Route 30 corridor implementation of discussion.
Sure, yeah, I thought I'd just sort of kick things off with an overview of the Route 30 study. It's done, it's been on the books for about three years now. Actually, you know what? I'll go ahead and share my, the presentation before I get ahead of myself here. I apologize. Little too tech, not too much technology for me, sorry. All right, yes, so like I said, the plan's been on the books for about three years now, and really, we've only begun implementing small pieces of it, but still, we're seeing a fair amount of redevelopment interest in the, along the corridor. So sort of just to get re-acclimated to the plan and sort of the concepts that are within, I thought it'd be good to just give sort of a reintroduction, talk a little bit about some of the key recommendations that came out of that planning process. Not really anticipating to get into a, any great in-depth discussion on any of these items, but really looking more for some general direction from the board on if and how to move forward with implementing the plan, particularly some of the land use and zoning recommendations. So the Route 30 corridor was called out as one of three priority areas, priority focus areas, rather, in the 2016 comprehensive plan, and that plan sort of envisioned the Langston Avenue corridor as a, as a main street with a mix of land uses, improved multimodal transportation options for vehicles, pedestrians, transit users.
That's me.
Yeah. All right. And so the township... Let's try this again. Are we still echoing? Maybe just turn your sound off. All right. And so the township pursued a grant, they were awarded a grant when they initiated this master plan in 2017. Really focuses on a four-mile stretch of 30 between 202 on the west and Old Lincoln Highway in the east. And you can see there's sort of the general study here. I know it's probably a little hard to see on the screens here in yellow at the bottom. So some of the, the plan really focuses on transportation and land use and all of the pieces that go into kind of revitalizing the corridor. But like I said, we'll focus primarily tonight on land use, but part of that really is transportation and some of the issues that, you know, where they interrelate. So one of the primary issues that was identified in the plan is this bottleneck that exists sort of where the, the two travel lanes in each directions next down, next down to one travel lane in each direction near the Lincoln Court Shopping Center, sort of west of Mailon Road. And this narrowing and some of the limited connectivity sort of with the cross streets to the north and south and the lack of a, sort of a parallel road running east and west really creates some connectivity issues. You combine this with a number of excessive curb cuts and driveways that sort of spill out into the roadway, it really creates a lot of congestion issues, a lot of safety issues that we're looking to address with this plan. And of course, anybody who's been down Langston Avenue knows that some of the pedestrian connectivity, the transit amenities are really, really quite limited, which creates issues for anybody not looking to drive in a car. From a land use standpoint, some of the items that were identified in the plan are the quote-unquote peculiar mix of land uses, old and new, pristine, unkempt, planned, improvised, a lot of disparate uses, you know, varying types of retail and office and industrial uses and in a predominantly auto-oriented environment, really not a lot of pedestrian amenities.
Yeah, on that issue, we're going to be looking at land use along Route 30. What are the predominant land use categories now along Route 30? I see mainly four of them, ROC, VMX, FC, and PO. Is there any others that it's a pretty tough map to see?
It is, and there are some other reference maps in the plan.
Right.
That lay that out. Those, so the zoning districts themselves are ROC, which is regionally oriented commercial, FC, frontage commercial, VMX, village mixed-use, PO, professional office. There are some pockets of OBP, which is Office Business Park.
Right.
But really, it's those four or five, and they do really have a lot of different types of land uses that are allowed, so it is kind of segmented in different areas.
Okay, so that's the baseline. That's where we are right now?
Correct.
All right. That's all I needed.
It's working now.
All right, I apologize for that. Hopefully, the rest of this goes a little more smoothly. Sure, yeah, I apologize for that. So really, what it comes down to is this, this hodgepodge mix of land uses, something that the community survey really called out in great detail. There's a, an overall lack of street treats and landscaping, which creates sort of a hard, sort of desolate look in some stretches of the corridor. A lot of the parking lots spill into the roadway, there's a lot of curb cuts, which creates a lot of turning movements, and it really creates for a very inefficient and very, and sometimes dangerous condition. And then the abundance of signage, this sort of concept of sign pollution, there's signs everywhere of varying sizes, and trying to create some more uniformity in all of these regards, I think, would go a long way. Some of the overall goals, I won't hit on all of these, but really, the idea is to enhance the local identity, you know, what is Fraser? We don't want it to just be a place that people drive through from Exton to Paoli. There should be some sort of sun-sense of place there. We'd like to enhance the streetscape, create some uniformity in what it looks like along the roadway and how properties front the roadway.
Zach, can I ask you, as you're going through this, you know, this was done a few years ago, and certainly land development ideas and concepts kind of change over that period of time. If you're able to pinpoint anything that may have, in your mind, altered from these conclusions, that would be helpful?
Sure, yeah, I think in general, a lot of the recommendations are still valid. There has been some redevelopment along the corridor, but in general, a lot of these concepts really haven't been implemented. We haven't seen the type of redevelopment that's envisioned here, and a lot of the pieces that sort of go into making this reality really haven't gotten off the ground. So, but I will try to do that as I, as I move through. So again, sort of create some mixed-use centers, which I'll get into in a little more detail, create some diverse housing opportunities, support some of the local businesses, encourage redevelopment, preserve open space where there's opportunities, and just improve the overall safety and traffic flow. So the vision, I'm not going to read this because it's sort of redundant with some of the things we just talked about, but you can see in this rendering, this is from the cover of the plan, sort of a future vision for what the quarter could look like, the future cross-section, which again, I'll talk a little bit about. This really isn't any specific intersection in the township, but you can start to see, you know, the sidewalks, the landscaping, different types of buildings and building orientation to the roadway, different configurations of parking lots. This is the kind of the idea of what you might want to see long-term along the corridor. So one of the primary recommendations that came out of the plan was to create a consistent five-lane cross-section with two travel lanes in each direction and a setter turn lane or median, depending, you know, how close you are to an intersection. And really, this would extend from, all the way from 202 to 29. A portion of that does exist today, but generally speaking, it's sort of a mixed bag. In addition to some of these roadway improvements, there are suggestions for additional turn lanes and signal upgrades at key intersections, and there's a whole capital improvements plan that really outlines a lot of this. Many of these improvements have been funneled into our Act 209 plan, so there is a means of funding potentially for this, though funding obviously will be a challenge long-term to implement the full suite of improvements. The, for the segments between 202 and Mailon, the consultants actually developed a conceptual plan that shows how the whole section of roadway could be widened from three lanes to five, and really with a goal of minimizing impacts on properties, though we do realize there's additional need for right-of-way and widening for about half the quarter. This concept plan is sort of the blueprint for how this could be implemented long-term, and it's a whole series of lane widenings and intersection improvements, access management that will help kind of guide how these project, properties, rather, are developed long-term. You can see here, there's sidewalks shown, there's street cheese shown, there's bus shelters shown, so really, every part of what we want to see long-term has been laid out. And this is overlaid on actual properties, so these are not just diagrams like we showed, like I showed in the last slide, but there's a lot of detail that went into this and figuring out how this could be implemented long-term and trying to weigh the individual property owners and their ability to develop the property with the long-term needs for the township in the corridor. And so one of the really cool things that, I'll just touch on this quickly, that came out of it was to take this concept plan, you know, the CAD drawings or the drafting software that engineers use, and to create a GIS layer or a mapping layer, so that we can actually overlay this whole concept plan that we, that's done for basically the whole quarter on site plans, so developers can integrate it directly into their land development plans and even into Google Earth to actually, you know, just from a desktop analysis standpoint, look at how each property might be impacted. So this is just a quick before and after. This is the existing aerial, this is the aerial with the concept plan. So it really allows us to take a look at how each property could be impacted and just kind of toggle back and forth and see what the differences will be long-term. So from a land use concept, context standpoint, the plan talks a lot about the existing conditions, a lot of the challenges that we see, and I think a lot of them we've either talked about or we're all sort of acutely aware of. But you can see here, there's sort of a continuum of, you know, our existing conditions, what sort of an enhanced suburban context might look like, and what a main street might look like. So in East White Land, we have probably one- or two-story buildings with deep setbacks, wide parking areas that kind of take over the site, there's a lack of landscaping and sidewalks, a lot of curb cuts, and a lot of vacancies, which is, you know, not inherently an issue of how it's laid out, but it's something that we need to address long-term. In the enhanced suburban context, you see taller buildings, usually at least two, two stories tall, they're generally located closer to the street. The orientation of the buildings is a lot more pedestrian-friendly, it's not set back quite as far, it's approachable, it's something you could walk to, and again, enhanced landscaping along the street. In the main street setting, an example might be Wayne as opposed to East Town with the enhanced suburban, you see buildings that are more like two to four stories tall, they often directly front on the sidewalk, there's often on-street parking or parking that's located in the side or rear, not in the front of the buildings. And again, street trees and pedestrian amenities that kind of make things a little more pedestrian So the main takeaway on a land use standpoint is that the plan really called out for two mixed-use centers and an enhanced suburban corridor, sort of connecting the two. And so you can kind of see here with, on this map, I know it's probably a little hard to see at this scale, the mixed-use center on the west kind of runs from Frame Avenue to about 352, right around the Linden Hall community, and then it's sort of this enhanced suburban corridor from there until just west of the Lincoln Court Shopping Center, sort of left, just west of Mailon Road, and then an additional mixed-use center that picks up, really at the Lincoln Court Shopping Center, runs just east of Conestoga. And really, the idea here is to kind of create some, some variation, you know, we've got these multiple, as Rich pointed out, multiple zoning districts that kind of apply a little bit more rigidity to the types of uses that can happen, and really, the idea is to kind of create some flexibility with how the quarter can develop and not have it be so isolated with different types of uses. Residential is considered to be something that will help encourage redevelopment and support local businesses, and that's really the context that residential is supported in the plan. Oftentimes, these residential projects can encourage lot consolidation, you know, you've got a lot of small lots that are constrained, and projects like this, especially with the residential market being so hot in the region, can really encourage a lot of these smaller, more problematic lots to be consolidated and redeveloped and in return to a more productive use. Another item that the plan calls out is the design guidelines, and really, what these look to do, sort of in addition to the normal ordinances, like the zoning and the subdivision land development ordinance, are kind of apply some additional context to look and the feel of how a site would be developed. So in the zoning ordinance, there would be some design guidelines that sort of give a little more detail on how buildings can be located on the site, the massing of the buildings, how tall they are, how bulky they are, and parking location and uses. So those are like the basic zoning tenants. In the subdivision ordinance, you get more into the specific improvements of how a site is developed. So what it calls out is things like small gathering areas, little parklets, green areas, landscaping and buffer, sidewalks and crosswalks, so all the things that kind of go into how sites develop to make it more attractive and more in line with sort of modern development. Sue? Sure. That is actually the next...
I'm doing good tonight, aren't I?
That's actually the next portion of the...
What's that?
Presentation here. I can flow right into that right now if you'd like.
No, I want to just...
Sure. Yeah, and originally, I was just trying to kind of give some orientation. So the mixed-use centers or these MUCs that I've talked about here are, they're also talked about in the plan as being nodes or hubs of activity, and they're really intended to be, sort of create opportunities for residential and retail and office, entertainment-type uses. They're, the focus really is being located within a walkable area that actually has the infrastructure to walk between properties and to create, again, sort of these hubs of activity, generally at busier intersections, sort of along corners, call them crossroads, if you like. And really, what the intent of these districts would be is to create areas of like higher-intensity uses, taller buildings, residential buildings, pedestrian gathering areas, and again, something that creates a little life at some of these corners. So really, you would encourage these types of uses and try to discourage the more auto-oriented uses, such as gas stations and car washes, and some of the more industrial uses like storage and contracting supply and warehousing and things like that. The enhanced suburban corridor, so ESC, shown on the map here, sort of those areas in between, really intended to permit, I would say, a larger, greater flexibility in uses, again, to the point of these existing districts that we have that are a little more rigid. You know, they might isolate retail versus office versus other types of uses. Really, the idea is to create some flexibility so that projects and properties can be developed in the way that the market... uses, they're, the focus really is being located within a walkable area that actually has the infrastructure to walk between properties and to create, again, sort of these hubs of activity, generally at busier intersections, sort of along corners, call them crossroads, if you like. And really, what the intent of these, these districts would be is to create areas of like higher-intensity uses, taller buildings, residential buildings, pedestrian gathering areas, and again, something that creates a little life at some of these corners. So, really, it would encourage these types of uses and try to discourage the more auto-oriented uses such as gas stations and car washes, and some of the more industrial uses like storage and contracting supply and warehousing and things like that. The enhanced suburban corridor, so ESC, shown on the map here, sort of those areas in between, really intended to permit, I would say, a larger, greater flexibility in uses, again, to the point of these existing districts that we have that are a little more rigid, you know, they might isolate retail versus office versus other types of uses. Really, the idea is to create some flexibility so that projects and properties can be developed in the way that the market would see them being developed in the future. We can't always predict these things, so really, it's the emphasis on getting the right form of a building, making sure that things are compatible, and all the pieces that go into it, like sidewalks, setbacks, landscaping, et cetera. So, these areas, the plan calls out would be to remain predominantly commercial, but to still mix in and have some adjacent residential areas to help support those businesses. So, what the, the plan did call out was sort of this development strategy plan, and it really just shows some of these areas, how they could be developed, again, kind of like the transportation concept plan, picked some key properties that either were under consideration at the time for development or could be viewed as potentially prime for redevelopment in the future. And so, what you see in the mixed-use center west is currently, it's sort of dominated by sales of rental and heavy equipment, there's cars and boats, and building materials, some of these properties, a little more rundown, they haven't been as well-kept, they're not as, as viable or vibrant as some of the other areas along the corridor. And that's really one of the things that came out of this plan was a lot of concern from the residents and people involved in the process about some of these blighted lots, and about some of the lack of investment, which I know obviously has been a point of emphasis just in these last couple of months, I know Ted has been targeting some of the enforcement on those properties. But there's also a lot of opportunities for lot consolidation and redevelopment, potentially for residential uses. Also, the proximity to Immaculata and the potential future train station someday, if that's project is ever able to get off the ground, really creates a good environment for redevelopment at this end of the township. On the eastern end, by contrast, you see a lot of larger lots as opposed to the smaller constrained lots we were talking about, we've got a number of shopping centers, there's a tank farm, a small office park, and next to it, a fairly large vacant property known as the Deerfield property, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a couple minutes. This area, again, a little more attractive, a little more cohesive, but could really still use a lot of attention and is still primed for, for redevelopment. So, what I thought I'd do is kind of run through a number of properties that have come up as part of the, this planning process, projects, or properties for which staff get a number of calls, projects and properties that we get a lot of questions from, from residents, and just kind of run through them, not really in any particular order, but just try to hit some of these high points of areas that we know are, are some of those properties that are, that are looking to or in need of redevelopment. The first are the Deerfield properties, located just west of Conestoga, sort of between Malon Road and Conestoga. This was a previously approved for a commercial office center, there's been a number of different proposals there over the year, over the years, ranging from different types of residential and other commercial uses. Like a lot of these properties that I'm going to talk about, and like a lot of properties along the corridor, there are a number of constraints, whether it's the railroad to the south, previous activities, environmental issues, or the presence of historic properties that kind of complicate site development. In this case, there's a number of monitoring wells in the site, it's in the downstream area from Bishop Tube, it's previously used, as I understand it, as a fill site, and so the depth and sort of the extent of some of the fill activities there in the past kind of creates some uncertainty with how to redevelop the site. There's also a large flood plain and riparian buffer along the northern side, or sort of the rear of the property, and the Pico lines run through the site. So, I say this all to kind of give some context as to some of these big properties that we have that we think are prime for redevelopment, it's not quite as easy as slapping together a land development plan, there's a lot of pieces that go in, that need to be sorted out in order to make these properties viable. Another sort of primary focus property is the importer, the, everyone's familiar with the importer barn, they're sort of situated catty corner on the, on the site. Obviously, that creates a complication for redevelopment standpoint, but there is some opportunities for assemblage with surrounding properties or a number of commercial properties that could be combined in order to create sort of a more developable property. Clues and Strawbridge, this is located on the south side of Lancaster Avenue, sort of in the 300 block. There's a historic building sort of at the eastern end of that site that's in very poor condition and sort of in need of some attention, to put it lightly. There's a lot of man-made steep slopes along the rear of the property, which obviously complicates things. It's also a relatively shallow lot that complicates the redevelopment, and we know that the owner is interested in potentially redeveloping this site, we've heard of different uses that have been thrown out for the site anywhere from an assisted-living facility to potentially an apartment or multifamily use. The next is the Wolf, the Brad Wolf Meeting House property, it's currently predominantly vacant, especially on the meeting house portion, it's located right next to the new GMH or Malvern Yards apartment building, but the presence of a wide riparian buffer along Valley Creek really makes this site a little more difficult to redevelop than it may appear from the road. Moving a little further west, the Plainbrook and Prospect Avenue areas, these are just sort of approximate outlines, but you can see sort of on either side of the Wawa and just north of the new apartment building going in at the former Norbros Mobile Home Park, there's a number of properties that really could be primed for redevelopment and are in an area where there is, you know, recent redevelopment activity, there's a number of properties, some of it is in common ownership, so it really does make for a good opportunity to see something more significant happen in that area. And the last one I'll talk about is the property at the corner of Maple Linden and Lancaster, this is the site of a former, a previous plan approval for a Lidl grocery store, it's right next to the Lincoln Court Shopping Center. We've had interest from a developer who has looked at a number of uses, most recently looking to do a multifamily apartment and/or some level of commercial development out front. And so, I give those all sort of as, sort of a crash course in some of these main properties that we know we need, that are primed for redevelopment and maybe something that we consider targeting either through some of these zoning ordinances, zoning ordinance amendments, or by working directly with the property in order to sort of determine what their vision is for the, for the project. So, with that, I'll just kind of kick it over to the board if there's any questions. Do have a couple of things that could maybe help get the conversation going, but we don't need to get into a great level of detail, again, just looking, sort of some direction on where we see the, the plan going, what the level of interest in moving some of these projects forward, and kind of go from there.
One of the areas that kind of focused a few years ago was the development of these nodes, which I think probably at this point in time is kind of a little on the outs, it hasn't been successful, I don't think, in other areas as well. Any thoughts on that?
I'm not sure that it hasn't been successful, I mean, the township, obviously, East White Land hasn't initiated any of these recommendations, we've seen some of the properties that were interested in redevelopment when this plan and, and some of the other projects, processes were going on, like the GMH apartment building, that's obviously created a very different look in that corner of the world. I know there was some interest in kind of seeing how that played out, to see what type of interest that sort of spurred in, in other property owners. I think there's a number of ways we could go about it, I think the, the recommendations in the plan to kind of create these, again, these nodes or these hubs of activities sort of at some of the crossroads, I think is a viable one, I think it makes a lot of sense. The areas in between, this enhanced suburban corridor, I think is equally as important, but I don't know that, I wouldn't say that necessarily this concept hasn't worked other places, but I couldn't really speak to any specifics on that.
Sue?
I think the real question that we brought this whole thing up for was because there is such a demand for residential, and the only area we have allowed residential in is BMX at the western end. And really, the question is, are we going to allow residential along 30 where it isn't allowed now? That's really what we're talking about.
Sure.
And that's really the nub of it.
Absolutely agree. Real estate development is market-driven, right now, the market is residential, period. You know, it's either residential or it's Amazon, it's one of the two.
Yeah, I'll take residential any day, but yeah.
Pretty much.
So, I guess the only philosophical question we'd have, since we had talked about putting the residential at the nodes, and now I'm wondering, is that realistic? Would it be better to have the residential in the intervening place, the enhanced suburban sections, and have the commercial at the nodes? I don't know which makes more sense, you know, I think when you think node, which is a kind of a dumb word, you're talking about a town, and when I think of a town, I'm thinking about the restaurants and the shops and the, you know, and you walk there, if you're lucky, from your apartment, which is down the road. A town is not the residential with the shops and the restaurants in the middle, I mean, down the road. So, I don't know if we've got that backwards, or whether we want to say yes to residential in their intervening spaces, which would be more the Lidl and, and Clues and Strawbridge area, and I don't know if we're going to do this one by one, or we're going to look at the whole thing and change the zoning, that's really what we're up against.
Yeah, of course, my presentation was a very long-winded way of getting to that very question, right? So, we've-
I knew it, I knew that.
I wanted to give at least a little bit of background, because it's been a few years, and I sort of fumbled through it, and hopefully at least kind of set the table a little bit to all the things that go into it, but I agree, the residential really is the fundamental question here, and in order to do some of these things, whether it's just encouraging redevelopment in and of itself, I think residential is obviously a huge component of that, we're not going to get other things to happen without having some level of residential, whether it's restaurants or commercial areas wanting to see that there are people in close proximity to actually frequent these locations. So, I think just from a redevelopment standpoint, yes, residential likely is a component of that. In order to make all those other things happen, I mean, I hear all the time that there's no, I mean, we know that there are restaurants, but there's not a lot of nightlife, there's not a lot of things to do in the evening, and I think that residential is obviously a huge component of that as well, we're not just a corporate center. Obviously, we have a huge daytime population, and our restaurants, I think, are primarily supported by that.
We have a huge, huge incoming population now, I don't know how long we're going to be an office center if everybody works from home, we might think a little longer about that. And when you talk about car-oriented, well, if you don't have people living there, they're going to have to bring their car.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think really, we're going to have to put residential along Route 30, it's kind of a matter of, we slowed it down to allow GMH to come in and see what impact that had, you know, is it time to allow another one? I don't know, that's, that's kind of the discussion.
Yeah, it's a matter of degree, yeah, and where do you draw the line?
Where, where do we want them, right?
If this was zoned residential tonight, we would have 10 applications at the door tomorrow morning.
You bet.
No question about it.
Yep.
And that's, you know, you have to give it some thought, there's, within the residential use too, there's, you know, the apartments, pluses and minuses to everything, apartments, less kids, more people, more traffic, townhouses, more kids, you know, we saw the presentation by the school district, they have to now build a fifth and sixth grade center, that has an impact. Residential, townhouses could be, or even apartments, I guess, could be age-restricted, and that'll solve the students' issue, but not necessarily the traffic. And do we make zoning appropriate for residential along Route 30 before we start widening it, or making it workable for that much traffic? I don't know.
If there was one project I would do, it's fix 352 and 30. If there was one project that we could, if we could fix that intersection, I'd be much more willing to do a lot more things.
What do we need there? Is there room to?
Well, it's very difficult, and because of the slope more than the room, I mean, the slope up, you know, when you come down 352 to hit 30, that's steep right there, going over the railroad tracks.
Under the bridge?
Well, under the bridge is a whole separate problem.
Right, yeah, right.
Yeah, there's both railroads and the bridges that go with them, there's the, like you said, the decline down into the road, you're, you're basically on a bridge where you would need to put potentially some additional turn lanes, so it's a very difficult intersection.
It's very difficult, but, you know, anything we do on 30 is just going to make that whole intersection worse, and it's a real difficult problem.
It is, and in order to create those additional travel and turn lanes long-term to the west, you know, to get to 202, obviously, that's going to be one of the main directions of travel, I would think, for future residential, but we, it does exist in other areas, but it's not something that I think is going to be, happen before this, this question gets answered.
No, it's by patriarchy, you know.
And it's not going to get solved directly by an individual project, we will get some areas of additional right-of-way, which will tee us up in the future, we'll get some areas of additional widening, which will help, but it's going to be a, it's a long process, and I think the plan, and we all are very aware of that, but at some point, there's got to be sort of a jumping-off point, I think that's what, that's what we're doing here tonight, is to try to get back on-
Well, I guess, assuming that we can't really fix 352 and 30 anytime soon, although I would love to have at least a plan as to how you would fix it. I think what we have to worry about is the decrepit areas and the vacant areas. I think Ted's done a good job of cleaning up the western end, the little houses, I'm not really interested in gentrifying that neighborhood, I'd like, I like, I think it looks much better, but I'm not in favor of getting rid of the lower-income section of our township.
Sure.
I don't want to gentrify the west end, I'd rather do something with the, with the problem areas, you know, I, we tried hard to do something with importer, and we couldn't get a developer go with us. Clues and Strawbridge is looking really ugly, and Deerfield is sitting there vacant, and so is the old car wash where Lidl was going to go. It's more like we really need to make some decisions out of those three, because they are the ugly spots.
Yeah, I agree, you try not to do zoning to one property at a time, of course, but we know that these are-
I know, we can, but that's what I'm worried about, though, I don't know how we do it legally and appropriately.
I'd like to add that when we look at the minor alterations that have occurred so far, I think we need to take some, some things from those two projects, one being Linden Hall property, and then also the GMH building, what we learned from those projects.
Well, I think we would, yeah.
The good and the bad.
Sure, I'll give you, just real quickly, my short list is, and I think it's something that these design guidelines tend to focus on, is a lot about building orientation, with Linden Hall, you see, I think, one of the things that I've heard from residents, aside from both in the community and, you know, around the township and elsewhere, you know, the short-
The backs of the buildings.
Exactly, short driveways, which is a problem. The, the, looking at the backs of buildings, and then with GMH, obviously, it's, it's a large building, so it's got to look good, and the point I'm trying to make is that architecture, building orientation, all these things that I hit on earlier are important, it's got to be a total package, it can't just be, let's just change the use table to allow residential of varying types, there's, it's got to be sort of a complete package.
Agreed, and on the GMH thing, when you look at the front of the building, very nice, when you look at part of the side of the building, nice, but then when you drive westbound on Route 30, all you see on the side is the white hardy board stuff, and that shouldn't be, that looks terrible, you know, so the, in the future, if there is an apartment that you can see from both sides, it needs to have a certain look, three sides.
I agree, that one doesn't help, it's sort of sitting a little higher than surrounding properties, there's not much around it, but you're right, it's, it's got to be something that looks good from all angles, and, you know, ultimately, there may be another building beside it that, that helps to kind of fit things in better, but I think we're, we're seeing, like you said, some of the things that we, we'd do better, I think if we had another chance at it, but-
You know, one of the things that has struck me with, with GMH is that I think we really need to focus on something like that with the, with the screening that exists between Route 30 and the actual building. I know that's part of the screening and landscaping portion of this, but, but that, I think, would enhance some of these designs going forward.
I mean, that's one other benefit of redevelopment wherever, is wherever it is, we're going to get our five lanes where that property is going to be developed, because we're going to get it, we're going to want it, we're going to take it.
Right.
And they're going to build it for us, so.
Yeah, and you see this, right in front of Linden Hall, there's, there was some widening that was done, and it's gored out now, but it's, it's essentially set up for the future, it's not a functional travel lane, but it's, we've kind of, I hate to nickel-and-dime the whole quarter, but we'll have to get what we can and fill in the gaps later with assistance of PennDOT, maybe some grants, it's not going to be easy, but again, at some point, you got to get the ball rolling. So, I guess what I'm hearing is that there's, there's interest in at least- that was done, and it's gored out now, but it's essentially set up for the future. It's not a functional travel lane, but it's, we've kind of, I hate to nickel-and-dime the whole quarter, but we'll have to get what we can and fill in the gaps later with the assistance of PennDOT, maybe some grants. It's not going to be easy, but again, at some point, you've got to get the ball rolling. So I guess what I'm hearing is that there's interest in at least moving some of this stuff forward. There's, obviously, the specifics are going to get a little more complicated. We're going to have to be very careful about where we're doing and how we're doing it. But it does seem like there's an interest at this point to getting started, let's say.
Well, we've got developers coming in, looking at vacant and rundown pieces of property, so yeah, we've got to do something. We can't just ignore it.
Right. I think it's time that we put our vision out there and try to have it created.
Are you saying that the recorder is not your vision?
No, I'm not saying that. But what is being presented to us by developers doesn't necessarily match that concept.
Yeah, I think what I've heard from some of the developers is, obviously, time is money to them. They want to know if the township is receptive to what they're looking to do, but they also realize that we can't just do a one-off every time someone's got an idea to redevelop a property. So I think some of the entities that we're aware of, that are interested in redeveloping, if we're able to move forward with some of these ideas, I think they're going to come along for the ride. And if we can kind of get a better sense for where we're comfortable seeing this type of development, and then getting all the pieces that go with it, kind of going along in the same train, I think that's going to, it's going to be beneficial for everybody. So I guess the one thing I'd maybe like some clarification on, we don't have to get, we don't have to hammer too hard or much further here tonight, but this concept of these mixed-use centers versus the enhanced suburban, do we like generally where they're drawn? Do they make sense? I mean, a lot of thought went into this during the planning process that I wasn't here for, so I'm a little, bit of at a disadvantage, but...
Having participated in that, I think we were generally driven by the consultants without really, I don't know that it was a strong feeling on the part of that committee as to this is the right placement of it. So I think that would be open for change if we thought putting residential in the ESC section made sense. I don't think everybody would die over a change like that.
Yeah, I think that is, the way it's laid out in, currently in the plan is residential at these centers, higher intensity, let's say, for lack of a better word, but still allow it elsewhere. So it's not just one or the other. It's kind of a matter of scale and what else you can do with it, whether or not it has to have commercial in the building or alongside it as part of that development. Those are the kind of questions that get a little more granular.
Well, that's the challenge. We wanted, you know, when we come up with village mixed-use, we wanted mixed-use. But you only get, as Rich says, if mix is not in the market right now, you're going to get all residential. And that's what we're, you know, the developer we've been talking to recently said, okay, you want mixed? I'll put a Taco Bell in front of my apartment building. Well, that's not exactly what we had in mind.
Right. Depends if they have the chicken, too.
You and your chicken, okay.
And even a couple of years ago, when we wanted the first floor of the GMH building to house a commercial, they pushed back then as well.
Well, because it just, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, you know?
Yeah. Generally speaking, apartments on top of retail has not worked. It didn't work up at Eagle View with all the units they have, the Hankin Group. It doesn't work a place up there. I mean, it works in the city. It works in Philadelphia. It works in New York, right? That's it, yeah. And I don't know if we want to turn East Whiteland into a city, yeah.
I don't think that's... I will say, too, some of these burrows and some of these planned communities where you think it would work, you think that concept would have taken off, it really hasn't, like people thought it would. I think the GMH zoning district, it was, you know, they were allowed to do commercial on the first floor, it wasn't required, but different ordinances, different townships, different municipalities have taken different approaches. And I think those are the kinds of things we're really going to have to think about, not only just where, but how. I mean, to me, there are certain locations where a standalone apartment building makes a whole lot more sense. An example, sort of the example that was already given, the Maple Linden property, there's a large commercial center right next door. So it's not to say that commercial couldn't do well there, or that there absolutely should not be commercial, but I don't know that it's necessary to still achieve that sort of mixed-use feel. There's going to be residents there to support the businesses. You're still accomplishing that same goal, so it's not a one-size-fits-all solution sometimes.
Right. I mean, I think residential there, it would be a boost to those restaurants that mostly do a lunch business, you know? I think it'd be nice if they had some customers in the evening.
And it's, you can walk from there to shopping center, you can walk over to Planet Fitness, you can take your dog across the street for, you know, wherever. So, yeah, there's pluses and minuses to each location, yeah.
It also just so happens to be the location where the road next down is like the first, one of the first properties where the road next down from five lanes to three. So it's an important property for a lot of reasons. I think it's, to me, this is one where it makes sense to be a residential property. It makes sense, given its surroundings. It makes sense, given the road network around it. So this is one, I think, not just because we have developers looking at this property currently, but to me, this actually does make sense as one of the, you know, if you had to call it another pilot project, or one that we really want to focus on, or a portion of the township we wanted to focus on, this, to me, is one of them.
I guess the trick is, how do we get away from not doing spot zoning and not doing a zoning for each individual? That's the problem.
Yeah, and I think that's what we've talked about, right? Is that we need to cast a wider net, to look at where we really want to see this stuff, and hopefully it accommodates these projects where people are looking to do it. But I think we do need to take a more holistic, comprehensive approach.
The corridor study, as far as Route 30 traffic widening and improvements, is there an estimate of the cost in there? I think there is. And was it ever envisioned to do it in sections versus, because it's not realistic to just do it as one project. It's just not right.
It's not a belief. So there's the portion of the plan that really talks about capital improvements, and it's mostly intersection improvements and widening. There's about five sections, I think, we talked about. This sort of happened at the back end when I was here, so I can speak to it a little bit. The thought was to kind of start at one end and work your way to the other, right? Focus on, I think, one of the higher priorities, obviously, was the Route 30-352 intersection. But again, cost prohibitive in a lot of ways. But yes, there is, there's costs, there's approximate designs, and there's a phasing plan. And like I said, a lot of that stuff has been rolled into our Act 209 plan. So there is, as we collect funds through redevelopment, we're able to actually initiate some of these projects. Again, drop in the bucket compared to the overall hundreds of millions of dollars that it'll take. But with cooperation from, you know, our regional planning partners and PennDOT, I think some of these things can slowly fall into place.
Along that line, does it make sense, along that line, does it make sense to do the road work moving east to west or west to east, or just in certain locations, enhance it?
I think there's going to be some cases where we do it almost a property at a time, depending on how some of these redevelopments line up, just given, you know, the example we were just referring to. But I don't see it as a project where PennDOT's just going to come through and say, all right, we're going to make it five lanes now, and go through that all once. I just don't see that happening. But what I do think we can do, where we can, unless we get some very ambitious and very large sum of money that we could put towards this, to part with PennDOT on, is to get the right-of-way, to get people on board with the concept. Those are the things that we can do in the short term.
And if we start with the western area, you know, you mentioned the Maple Linden, that's one. But if we say that, then Deerfield's going to say, what about us? Then Clues and Strawbridge is going to say, what about us? So there's three right there, and if we took any one, you know, they're all going to be at the door, right? All at the same time. So we've just got to really give it some thought, yeah.
Yeah, and again, not to belabor it too much further, because I think this has been, I would say this has been helpful, at least from the staff level, to get some direction. But I think that's all the more reason to really think about what we want to do, where, and put it into motion, and not try to accommodate one-off projects. Because that, as much as we want to see projects happen, we do need to make sure that it's, all those other pieces are falling into place.
Okay, great.
Yes, we'll start the process, I guess.
So, yes, staff can get to work on some ideas, try to refine these things a little bit more. These are really broad concepts, of course, but we can try to pull together some more information for the board to look at, and maybe figure out some ways to target some of these specific properties and how to include them in these areas that we're focusing on.
There's a table that you showed us that has two columns, mixed use and the ESC. Is there a table that adds the, compares those to the existing zoning districts on one sheet? Add four more columns so we can see what's in one and the other, and pick and choose, and make sure we're somewhat consistent?
You mean in terms of the permitted uses and the development standards?
Yeah, right.
I don't believe there was anything specifically like that, but we can pull something together that helps to compare the two.
Okay, that'd be helpful, for me, anyway.
Do we have any public comments?
No.
Okay, great. Well, Zach, thank you for that. Moving on to zoning, Ted Locker.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Can lead us with the application for the green fig land.
You know, while we're on that, do you want to do the next one first? Because that's probably not going to take much discussion, other than telling me what a pergola is, because I don't know what it is.
Sure, we'll jump over...
That won't take long, I'm sure.
Yeah. A pergola is basically a roof section over top of an existing deck. In this particular case, it's a lowered, motorized unit that closes or opens. It does have a wind default that it opens so that it won't lift, but in a rain event, obviously, it closes, which becomes building coverage, in my opinion. So this, the size of this particular pergola puts them slightly over the allowable coverage for building coverage on their lot. And it's probably close to half a percent, really, so it's not a large overage, but obviously, it's going to restrict any further development of the property that way, as far as sheds or anything of that nature.
Where is Five Accord Drive?
This is in the new Toll Brothers community off of Flat Road.
Oh, okay. All right. Let zoning handle that. I absolutely, okay.
Okay. And then, of course, the green fig application is basically the data center proposal. I know the applicants and their attorney are on the call tonight, and basically looking for the same relief that was granted on one of the specific lots. This is for the, I guess, additional lot there that's part of the overall project. And if you'd like, I'll let the applicant or Mr. Colagreco take over and explain.
Thanks, Ted. You've summarized accurately what this is. The board may or may not remember that three years ago, the zoning hearing board granted a certain variance is to allow for construction of a data center on the Sweetsford Road property. And since that time, I'm sure the township is aware that efforts have been made through the state legislature to actually bring this use into Pennsylvania. We were, as a state, somewhat at a disadvantage in competing with other states. So the project went dormant until the legislature acted just this past June and passed some tax incentives, for want of a better word, that would now make population of a data center in Pennsylvania a viable economic venture. So, of course, now interest has resurrected in our data center. The township ordinance, zoning ordinance, back in 2018, didn't allow or make provisions for a data center. So the zoning board crafted an order which allowed for a data center as it was defined, plus ancillary facilities to be constructed at that time. It never went to land development. Probably a good thing, because now we seek to have the zoning board extend that relief across an additional 40 acres of the property, 35 acres, which was not the subject of the original application. I can get more detailed, if you'd like. I can go into the specifics of the relief, but suffice it to say, it is all relief that was previously granted by the zoning board. It simply didn't extend to this additional acreage. So the data center would be larger. It'd be approximately 1.9 million square feet, two-story buildings. The parking ratios, which the zoning board previously approved, we would ask to have extended, you know, to the new space. It's very sparsely parked. The township doesn't have any ratio close to what is needed for this. Again, not many people work at these places. We would need certain landscaping relief, which the, I think that request may have gotten blown out of proportion a little bit. All we're asking for, frankly, is that a good portion of the parking for this site is going to be in what we call green parking. I call it reserve parking. Areas that can be used for parking, but we don't need them but for one or two days, possibly a year, so they'll be green. We don't want to put parking lot islands in those parking, in that green field. We don't want to put those trees in that green field. So that's one aspect of the landscape relief, which, again, the zoning board acknowledged three years ago. The other aspect is some site perimeter landscaping, which we are fully going to do. The only areas in that that we're asking for relief were, again, previously granted by the zoning board. They have to deal with areas where there's a membrane underneath the property, which to capture, I guess, certain pollutants that were on the property. But, you know, we can't penetrate that membrane. And there's pipeline easements, where you can't plant on top of the easements. So that relief will be similar to what was thought previously. But barring that, the project, other than the scale of the project, remains the same. The zoning relief, as I just said, remains the same. And we're proceeding to the zoning board later this month for that hearing. The planning commission unanimously recommended all of the relief requested at their meeting a couple of weeks ago. But rather than me go on and on, you know, I think it might be more beneficial for me and our team to answer any questions that the board might have.
I have a couple. Did you, or does the land development ordinance require a traffic study at the time of land development, if it reaches that?
It would be at the time of land development if we get that far.
How about a fiscal impact study? Same question.
I don't believe the ordinance requires a fiscal impact study, but if the board wanted to see a fiscal impact, I mean, all the news would be good here. I'm pretty confident of that, at the time of land development.
Yeah, I think that'd be helpful, at that time. As part of a traffic study, typically, in this case, does the ITE yet even have a designation?
That's a good question, Rich. When you asked that question, that was going on the back of my mind. I don't know. My guess is they probably do, because these are, what, maybe seven or eight-year phenomenas, these centers? There's probably enough data out there that they have some category, but I don't pretend to be an expert in that.
Assuming 1.9 million square foot was to exist, does the existing Pico station have sufficient capacity to handle it as is, without any expansion and without any adverse impact on East Whiteland community?
I'm going to defer to Charlie. Charlie, why don't you answer that?
Rich, when we went in to talk to Pico, Pico's actually pretty excited about it, because when the rolling mill went away and the lithium processing plant went away, they were left with about 30, I think it's 34, 35% capacity being utilized currently. And they're really excited about getting this, because they have the room for it, and they're even thinking about selling us a little bit of property to put some of our, possibly put some of our equipment on. So we've been talking to them about that. They lost the refinery in the city, and they feel that this is a good place for them to make up some of that business.
Not by building a refinery?
No, 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 no. Oh, please, no.
All right, all right. Just checking. Just checking. Just asking. Are there any plans? I don't know whether your seller controls the West Whiteland side. Is there any plans that you know of from any developer for that side?
The West Whiteland side is being, West Whiteland Township's going to take that, and there are plans that we helped them develop to build a public works facility that's somewhat similar to yours, a little bit smaller.
That's closer to Sweetsford Road, or... That's closer to Sweetsford Road, or closer to Lancaster Avenue?
It's right off of Valley Creek, next to the bike trail.
On the Lancaster Avenue side, or the Sweetsford Avenue side?
Neither.
Neither. In between, directly in between. So, where the whiteboard switchback is, where the trail goes across Valley Creek?
Sure.
It's to the south of there. Where that road used to go, where the road went through there, parallel to the bike trail?
Okay, got it.
It's the first section in there.
It's where the gate is?
Correct.
That driveway, yeah. Okay, sure, okay.
I may as well answer your question about the trip generation. It is, the data center is in the ITE manual. I wanted to double-check that. It looks like it's the lowest trips in the manual, as well. 0.09 trips per thousand square feet. Appears to be the lowest number they actually have on the table.
The microwave towers, where they are shown on the plan, they will be in that location and not any closer to Sweetsford Road, correct?
Correct.
That's all I have for questions.
Has there been any further discussion about moving the trail at this point, since the last discussion?
Yes. I've talked to the county planning commission, and they told me, the way they said it to me was, the only way that that thing would be moved would be if it were extraordinarily straight, and that if it were a deal breaker to get a major tenant in here that they thought was a very, was a first-class tenant. So, if we came in with a first-class tenant and the trail was a deal breaker, from their security point of view, then that, then they will consider it. Really, if we can get the landscaping up on the outside of there, get the interior landscaping out from behind the fences, and we can, and we can get a clear shot in there for security inside the, inside our property lines by moving those trees, and we want to use all those trees. We don't, we're not trying to get out of any landscaping. We want to put all that landscaping on the north side. To put it in landscaping over by 202, or between us and Pico, or any of those places, is not useful. It's useful to shield the bike trail and to shield the neighborhoods on the, on the north side of Sweetsford from looking into that property. And we're going to, we're, we've also, as you know, we've agreed to, in return for using the, for using the right-of-way through there, we've agreed to decommission the sewage treatment plant.
I don't know when it would come up, but there, under the easement and license agreement, there's other items in there, other obligations, other than the decommissioning. I assume that would, they would stay in effect or be refashioned for this use. Some of them are addressed towards the CCRC, which wouldn't exist. So, that would have to be resolved, I guess, at a later date. And I would think the whole document would have to be revised.
Well, we're, we've tried to signal in every way that we're willing to work with you. The township's been very cooperative with us and has been very patient with us as we went along. And some of this was a learning process, and so, we're, we're working hard to be good neighbors to the people on the north side of the road. We've been to talk to the neighborhood association over there twice. They seem to indicate both times. One of the questions that came up was about the traffic light there. We asked them about a traffic light, and they specifically said that they didn't really want one. And there was a fair amount of discussion about it, but there's not that much traffic coming in and out of here. And it'll come out, some of it'll come through from Valley Creek Boulevard. Some of it can come through, to one of the buildings can come through Backton Hill Road, the old planned entrance. And some of it can come through the road across from Malvern Hunt. But the other thing that we're going to do is bring our, the bulk of our construction traffic in off the Pico easement. So, we're trying, we're trying our best to be good citizens over there.
Yeah, I think there, when you mentioned Backton Hill, there would definitely have to be a traffic study on that, to see what impact, if any, is on that already terrible intersection. But that's.
Well, we could even, we could even make that a one-way out or something like that. We're willing to work with you on that. And I certainly understand all the, you know, how, how this works.
Well, Charlie, you know, we've been talking about this for years. And generally speaking, the idea of a data center is a very low impact on the township. I mean, it's a big building, but it's a low building with little traffic, clearly no children. And I think this big piece of property, if it didn't go for a data center, would be very high-pressure to be heavy residential. When it was a CCRC, I believe there were something like 850 units in there.
That's correct.
So, I would put my support behind your proposal and your need for the variance on that additional parcel.
Thank you.
There's one other question I thought. How many megawatts does this facility need?
At the beginning, we're going to start out at probably 40 megawatts, and we're going to go up from there. And we don't know what, we don't know how much it's going to be yet. So, what we're doing is, we're getting the approvals for the amount of space that we, that we may ultimately need. We did, we need, we have a customer, we have several people talking to us, but we don't have the actual customer yet. We, when, three years ago, we had somebody come in and looking at it, telling us that they wanted a bunch of different things. And the deal breaker then was the state's tax, sales tax on data center equipment. And we went and changed that. And so, that's, that's why we're back to you now. We found in the course of this, that there's, that there's a great demand for these things. The law in Pennsylvania that we got passed is a phenomenal law, and it'll, it'll benefit the entire state. We're self-policing, we're self-fire, we have our own fire extinguishing equipment. We're all, we have our own security. We have about 10 or 15 people working in the place in each of the million-square-foot buildings. And it's, it's a, really, it is, as Sue said, a real low impact, and it pays an enormous amount of tax, of tax revenue into the school district particularly. And they're going to need that to build that lovely building we saw.
Yeah, that, that was timely.
What's the, what's the largest data center in the country? Do you know which, what, how large it is?
Generally, they're, generally, they're connected together, and you'll see five or six million square feet in some places. So, they're, so that, you would normally see a building of 600 to 1.2 million square feet for these hypercenters. And there aren't any of them currently in Pennsylvania, because the law was so unfriendly to them. But there will be. Now, there's one going in in Berwick right now that's pretty large. And that's connected to the nuclear plant in Berwick.
Most of them are down in northern Virginia, yes.
Correct. There are, there are centers where they are, but the thing that Pennsylvania has is, it has a very favorable climate to this. We have a very neutral climate, and they're, they like this area. It's, power's cheap. You don't have anybody complaining about moving to Dubuque, Iowa. And so, it's easy to hire people here, and it's easy to, for them to locate here. We're also out of the blast zone from Washington, DC. We're close enough to New York City to be in the latency circle for them. So, we can control 40% of the, we can control 40% of the traffic on I-95 if we're all electronic.
That's nice to know, we're outside of the blast zone. I don't have anything else.
Ted, what date is the hearing?
On the 27th.
7 o'clock?
7:15.
Well, I think we should send Joe to go. Do you guys agree?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Make sure all those conditions are imposed, except they're not already part of land development.
Generally, generally, I agree. You know, we just spent a lot of time talking about Route 30 Quarter and design guidelines and screening and all that. I'd love to see something other than just an impervious parking lot sitting there. A few parking islands and a few trees and a few greenery in there would be nice, but, but it's not going to totally impact me. I mean, if you can consider that, I think it would be a good move, but... So, I'm all set to send Joe. All right?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Right.
Okay, so, Sue, can we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to send our solicitor to the zoning hearing board in support of ZHB 11-2021, application of Green Fig Land LLC, for all the other things that's listed.
Rich, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Lou, you're three, you're three for three.
Hey, Lou, hit the good one.
I'm leaving now, thank you. Have a good night.
Get out of here.
Thank you very much, good night.
Good night.
Moving on, Donna, do we have any folks for public comment?
Yes, we have one. Deb Mobile.
Okay.
Hi, Deb Mobile, 42 Village Way. I was just wondering, summer is come and gone, and I am not blaming, certainly blaming, East Whiteland Township. But have we heard anything at all from the DEP about when they plan to release the documents and meet with the public?
Yeah, I think Steve Brown can answer that.
Great.
They have advised me generally that they will provide information to the public in the township by the end of the month. So, that may be past summer, as Deb said, but it's, it's pretty close, depending on when you consider summer to end. But they told me the end of the month, they'll have information for us and the public.
Okay, all right. Great, thank you very much.
Thanks, Deb. Consent Agenda 9A, approve the meeting minutes from August 11, 2021. 9B, ratify payment of bills for August of 2021 in the amount of $572,797.96. 9C, accept the treasurer's report as of August 31, 2021. 9D, approve the . traffic signal maintenance agreement. 9E, approve purchase of fire pre-planning software from first due in the amount of a startup cost of $6,600, followed with a $5,000 annual maintenance fee. 9F, approve the recommendation from the pension trust to reduce the actuarial assumption for rate of return to 7.25%.
Scott, I'd just like to mention, as additional information, F and G are related. The trustees have been analyzing in conjunction with Usha Hogan, as well as our actuary, the impact of reducing the rate of return from 7.5% to 7.25%. The rough calculation to date has been that it would actually save us $75,000 a year in the budget, because the, mostly because the returns in the market have been favorable over the recent past. Finance is continuing to work with our actuary to fine-tune those numbers. We're required by law to have the board pass the 2022 municipal obligation for pensions. That would be 9G. So, the information that was included in the packet is a good ballpark figure, but we'll have further information from the board later on this month. So, I just wanted to clarify 9F and 9G.
So, was it 7.5%, we're lowering to 7.25%?
Correct.
And even lowering at 1/4%, there's still a reduction in the, in the projected?
Correct.
Wow.
Yeah, it's just because the market has been.
Oh, market's been crazy, yeah. Market's been nice.
The last time the actuarial assumptions were looked at, the market was, was not well. And so, now it's gotten better.
Did they look at, what was this difference if it was lower to 7%?
That, that's a great question.
Would have been an increase, I bet, but how much of an increase?
Yeah. Usha, do you know?
No, we just worked with 7.5% versus 7.25%.
Really?
And 7.25, I mean, John Barco put some work there, so we can ask to look at if you want to see that. We can definitely look into it, but...
More curious than anything. I mean, I'm sorry, I haven't been able to make the meetings, so, yeah.
We've been, we've been taking a long-term approach and a step-by-step approach to this, not trying to do wholesale changes to this because of the market fluctuations. So, we'll be coming back to the board at a later date to take a look at the 7% number, anyway.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea to get it even 7. Some people think is on the high end, but with what's going on now, who knows how long it's going to last? That's the problem. Nobody knows.
We're, I think they're talking about hitting our debt ceiling at some point in October. Federal government, so...
Yes, them, not us.
Right, but it'll have an impact on many, many things.
Right, okay, all right.
Okay, 9G, approve the 2022 minimum municipal obligations under the Pension Act of 2005. 9H, ratify the emergency declaration signed September 2, or, yeah, September 2, 2021. And 9I, approve bid from Steinbauer for Gunkel Mill Stonework, an amount of $7,600. And I saw some of the emails. Steve, I guess this, this is the last piece to complete the construction of the wheel. Zach, I'm sorry, Zach.
That's okay. Yeah, so, the majority of the other work, the civil work and all that stuff that's been going on over the last couple of years is done. The wheel is in place. Wheel is functional. It spins the rigging inside. They've even set up some sort of a water feature to spin it. This would be to cover the pier and some of the exposed dirt on the actual wheel pit.
So, with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll do it. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes. Any other business? Meeting adjourned at 9:30.